And we're live.
Okay, good evening. I would like to call to order the August 24, 2020 Lake Washington School Board's Study Session. Let the record reflect that all board members are present and participating remotely. All meeting participants will also be joining this meeting remotely in alignment with the current proclamation issued by Governor Inslee. This board meeting will be livestreamed and viewable on the district's website. If you are unable to livestream the meeting, viewers can call 425-936-2813, conference ID 37127 to listen to the meeting. Regular board meetings and study sessions will continue to be livestreamed on the Lake Washington School District website and posted for viewing within two days. We have one topic for the study session tonight, and that is engaging student voice in board work. And Dr. Holman, could you lead us through this discussion?
Yes, thank you. And really, tonight is about the board really dialoguing and then providing direction for me as far as what is it that the board wants to see in terms of, maybe I'll just call it a first step in engaging student voice in board work. One of the conversations that we had in cabinet today is while the board's having this conversation, we also are going to have this conversation as a cabinet to think about organizationally, how do we systematically engage students in our work? And so, we're actually going to set some time aside, probably a retreat-type day, to actually map that out. Because when I think about literally every part of our organization, we can benefit from engaging, from hearing, from empowering our students to actually have a voice, to inform, to help us in decision-making, and so that's work that we're going to be engaged in as well. But to do it in a way that we're actually setting up systems and structures, again, so that it isn't person-dependent, but it becomes part of the fabric of how we do business as an organization. And so, I just, and that's why the study session probably would have been beneficial prior to the board meeting, because that was a lot of the discussion tonight around the equity work. And when you think about, you know, how do you actually understand the needs of the system, which are our students, our parents, our community members, it's through engagement. It's listening, it's dialogue, it's engagement. And so, that's work that we will do and I will share with the board after we've concluded that. And so, but for tonight's purpose, I actually put together a few slides. Siri shared with me some of the research that she had done around local districts and some of the work they're doing around student engagement. There's actually great online information around thinking about student voice and student engagement, not just for school boards, but for school districts. And so, this isn't a topic I've done a ton of research around. And so, it actually was, I found it quite enjoyable to do the reading, to do some research, to start building out maybe a more holistic framework in thinking about how do you engage student voice? And so, I will, I'll share the presentation. And what I'm thinking is, the presentation is more of a set for the board than to have dialogue. And this is just my thinking around the work, some of the different opportunities for the board then to kind of go from there and dialogue, discuss, and provide direction. And again, I want to go back to what I said to, it was either the full board or to Siri when we were, just after I was hired, that this is a conversation we've had for seven-plus years as cabinet and board. And so, I would prefer to do something as an initial start than not do anything at all. Because I think the board has a true interest in having students participate. And so, rather than aiming for perfection, I would rather aim for something that we, and then we can evaluate that as we go along, because we can always modify, adjust, reconfigure. But if we never do anything, then it will just be this ongoing conversation that probably we wish we would have taken action, but we haven't yet. And so, let me, okay, so you can see that. And so, there we go. And so, when I think about the interest that the board has stated over the years, it's really an interest in engaging with students and increasing their voice in board considerations and decisions. And so, that's an interest statement from my perspective. And so, as the board thinks about this, you may have different reasons for engaging with students. And so, I think probably developing an interest statement or purpose statement is going to be important as we move forward. One of the things that I found around engaging students was this kind of the spectrum of different ways that students engage with adults around the work. And you can see it's all the way from expressions, so kind of volunteering opinions, maybe board comment or public comment is similar to that. And so, you're getting student voice, but it's really through students coming to you with their information rather than actively seeking it. And then, there's consultation. It's actually sharing feedback and opinions in like focus groups, participation in meetings such as a board rep, participation, so explicit kind of institutionalized role in decision-making. Activism is, you know, truly identifying problems, solutions, and actually advocating for change. And then, there's all the way to leadership, so co-planning and executing and having a shared responsibility for outcomes. So, this is a nice spectrum for us to think about, and I put the reference at the bottom here. It's a great website. They do a really nice job of kind of walking through a number of different considerations for thinking about student voice in our work. And so, and again, it's not just board work, it's also district work. When I think about some of the different methods for the board to engage with students, I went through a few of the different ideas or concepts, and then I did a strengths and a limitations. These aren't the only strengths, and these aren't the only limitations. They were just some of the initial things I was thinking about that maybe to spur thinking for the board as you're thinking about this work. And so, a survey, it is a way to engage students. And so, some of those strengths, it provides a large set of data related to students and their opinions. You have more voices responding to board questions in a survey. And you actually can get that information in a pretty rapid manner in regards to launching a survey, getting information back, and being able to disaggregate that data. Some of the limitations, the board isn't actually interfacing with students directly, and the data is limited to response to either forced choice or narrative responses that require some set of analysis and interpretation. So, that's one level of student voice. Another would be staff reports. And so, what's a strength of that? Ability for staff to engage with students more consistently. So, we are onsite, we are on campuses, we have the ability to engage with students more consistently, and our ability and staff time to collate and analyze data prior to a presentation. Limitation of this, the board isn't actually interfacing directly with students again. The data is interpreted through staff lens, and it isn't always going to be related specifically to board work or board policy, but there's definitely going to be a connection point and a tie there. Another model is actual listening sessions. The board may call them linkages. So, some of the strengths around that is the board is actually interfacing and hearing directly from students. And so, there is no interpretation, there's no analysis needed. You are actually hearing directly from students about the questions that you're developing. Feedback is directly related to board work and policy, because it's specifically, the board is in the room, asking the questions, and kind of pre-planning around what that feedback session, that listening session would be about. And you have the ability in real time to either reframe a question or to re-engage a student that you think maybe has more to say. Some of the limitations, time is always going to be a limitation for the board, to do it consistently and to do it well. And given the time factor, it really probably is more of a periodic versus an ongoing feedback loop, unless the time is allocated for that. Another model is actually having identified student representative or representatives on the board. So, what's a strength of that? It's, the board is again interfacing and directly hearing from a student or multiple students. Feedback is directly related to the board work and policy, because they are part of the board's meetings, and they have the agenda, they have the board packet. Again, you can reframe and re-engage in the moment around your work. And these representatives actually become highly educated about the board's work. And so, they're going to provide a deeper, you know, insight and dialogue with the board around the work. Some of the limitations, this model actually reduces the number of student voices that the board is hearing from. Student time needs to be a consideration. And when we think about, is it representative or not? I would probably say it's not representative of students, but it is a student representative. And so, probably the difference there is they're not being elected to represent all students in Lake Washington. They're being brought into this role to provide a different lens or framework as the board is making considerations. Part of the information that Siri shared had information about what other neighboring districts are doing. I also went out to websites to see if I could find any information from our neighbors about, do they have student reps on their board? Issaquah, from their website, it doesn't appear that they have student reps. Mercer Island, they reported in information to Siri that they have two student reps, but currently their website doesn't mention that. North Shore, there's no mention of, and it does not appear that they have student reps. Bellevue, same as North Shore. And then Shoreline, they have one board rep from each of the comprehensive high schools for a total of two, and they actually list those board representatives, those student reps, on the same site as they have the descriptions and introductions of their board members. And so, it's, it kind of demonstrates an active involvement by those students. And then, additional information that Siri provided was from the Battleground Public School District. And they just kind of do a nice job of framing the role of a student representative. So, I'll just give you a minute to read through that. In that second paragraph, I like how they kind of outline not only expectations to attend meetings, but really, what is the purpose of having the student reps? It's to contribute to board discussion by providing student insight and perspective, serve as a liaison for the associated student body, and report to students about the work of the board and district activities. Now Battleground School District is a smaller school district. I believe it's in southwest Washington. And so, context might be a little bit different. I believe they have one high school, and so that representative of the ASB of the high school probably is a little bit different. But this gives a nice framework for how they're thinking about it and communicating that work. And so, that's the presentation that I put together. I also wanted Mike to comment on, and he talked a little bit about during the board meeting, some of the different ways we engage student voice in our work. Mike, do you have additional comments about that?
Yeah, I just, I think I mentioned most of them already. But as I mentioned, we have student representatives on our instructional materials committee. I think there's four annually. And I was sharing this morning, just my own experience when I was chair of the Instructional Materials Committee, some of the conversations that we would have as a result of a student being at the table, sharing their perspectives, their values, their interests, oftentimes shifted a conversation from, say, for example, maybe approving something to not. So, that, they were just spectacular on that. But again, I think as Dr. Holman was mentioning, you know, they were providing a perspective as a young adult, and they had their own perspective, but they didn't represent every student in the school. Similarly, though, when we do adoptions, I think I mentioned as well, we do ask students to help us look at the materials, try the materials out, and then we ask all the students who participate in that. And oftentimes, if you recall, that can be in the hundreds to even thousands of students to share their perspectives, both in terms of how they value the curriculum resources they look at, but also to provide us written comments. And again, as I was saying with Instructional Materials Committee, we've actually had cases where we can point to where student comments actually shifted a decision of the adoption committee from really strongly valuing one curriculum, and then reading student voice and saying, you know, students actually value these things more, and it would make more sense for us to adopt this other set of materials. So, they actually shifted the thinking of an entire adoption committee. So, that was something that I think was really valuable for us. And then, as Dr. Holman was mentioning, Shoreline has a representative, and I had an opportunity to observe some of the board meetings with students there. And again, students who can speak to their experiences, their perspectives, really adds a richness to the conversation. And again, I think the conversation we were having this morning, though, is there's this really interesting dynamic. You want students to be at the table that are actually going to provide voice, be willing to speak, to share their perspectives. And so, sometimes there's a, there's an instructional or a coaching component or an orientation component. And you also have to be thoughtful about how you select students, because oftentimes, it can be the same voices that we always hear, and we may be losing an opportunity to hear from other students. And so, you know, we're always thinking about, how do we make sure that we're thinking about the purpose of having student voice? Is it to get the perspective of a young adult? Is it to represent groups of students? And then, thinking about how do we help students to be really meaningful participants in the process and giving them opportunities to share? So, those are two, I think, really great experiences, great examples we have in our district where student voice is actually shaping and informing decisions that we're making that have really wide-ranging implications and have been a value add for many years. And I think, you know, expanding or using those examples would be really helpful for the board.
Another example of engaging with students is meeting with our youth councils. And so, something that's been in place for many, many years, you know, well before me, was the superintendent meets with representatives from the youth councils from all of our municipalities. And so, Kirkland, Redmond, Samamish, they all have youth boards that are active in the community. And the superintendent and additional staff meet with them about quarterly, every six weeks or so. And it really is, it's a student-driven agenda. And, you know, they'll ask kind of large questions that we try and provide organizational kind of executive-level data and information to kind of help them fully understand, you know, what does it take to implement a technology system, per se? That's one of the questions we've answered. Or what are you doing about social, emotional learning and mental health supports? You know, and those are hour, hour-and-a-half-long discussions with students. And in that, getting really, really rich information about their reflection on our programs and services that we offer, and also what they see the needs are in their schools. And so, I know a young man named Colby participated in many of those. And, you know, and I'll just reflect, it was, I knew Colby from many, many years ago. And then, to see him come into that space and to talk about his perspective, his voice, his opinion, disagree with, you know, an adult, disagree with a peer in a very respectful way. They were just great dialogues, and we always walk away from those having a better perspective. And I think that's the overall goal of this work. And so, that's kind of our comments around student voice. And so, Eric, I will hand it over to you to kind of have a dialogue around this. And if we can answer any questions about what we're doing, we're happy to do so. But really, my hope for this conversation is that we, there's an action item that myself and staff walk away with, so that we can actually develop what it is the board would like for at least this school year, whether it's student rep, listening sessions, you know, whatever that is.
So, Siri, this has sort of been your, I don't know what word to use. It's been an area of focus for you. So, I'd actually like to give you the opportunity to kick us off if you have any initial thoughts. You're also on mute, so I might resent that.
There we go. I'll turn off the mute. No, thank you. I appreciate that. It has been a conversation, and we've worked around multiple things. What I will say is whereas student board reps might not be represented directly around our surrounding districts, North Shore does run a student advisory council that meets with their board at least once a year, as well as with their superintendent. I'm not sure about Bellevue School District, but perhaps they might as well. And Issaquah does run with all their, each of their high school has a rep. They don't sit with the board necessarily, but they do work with them. So, I do think it's a piece we've been missing for a long time, and it's a piece that should come forward. And I think it's multi-tiered. I think there is the component that the board has to have that student voice, much as I represent the Lake Washington School District, and I am just one person representing over 100,000 voters. I do believe a student could do just as well as representing the 31,000 students within our district. And I do appreciate Battleground's comment, actually, when they make the comment of, part of their goal is to liaison and go back. Vanessa Kreitzer, who is the city council member on Redmond, she used to be the students' U-Dub's board liaison. And so, she talks a lot about having to do a lot of, so she'd be at those board meetings and hold those conversations, but then would work hard to connect with those student groups and make sure those voices. And whereas I've always valued that our staff meets with city councils, I am actually rather embarrassed that we, as a district, do not directly meet with our students here, and we are utilizing the city's structure and not having our own, since we should be role modeling student engagement. So, it has always been sort of a sad point, from my view, that we had not engaged at that level yet. So, I encourage any stuff we do, but I think it's board and district. It's on all levels that we have to do it. No one is it. And now is just the time to bring those voices forward. So, I'm happy board reps could do that. We could do multiple. I think, I could see linkages are definitely a piece we do regardless of any sort of permanent, ongoing piece. And that linkage might be something that's part of the student reps' responsibility to help set up and make sure that, you know, what's the topic area? How do we do it? How does that feed back? So, I think there's lots of opportunities, but I do agree, we just got to do something, and we got to do it soon.
Director Sage?
I caught myself. Be impressed. I caught it this time. North Shore School District also has a representative who run, a student representative, who runs a program with special needs students. And I believe it is like a Lunch Buddy program, or it's, you know, Have a Friend program, where they can connect after school. If the student, you know, plays a sport, maybe somebody comes, they match, they match students and special needs students together. And that person also has a position on their advocacy team, that student does. So, I thought that was an interesting addition to their student voices. I, I know Siri really likes the one-student rep model. I would, my only concern with that right now for this year would be if that student becomes overwhelmed and cannot continue in that role, it might be helpful to have more than one. If we're looking at a representative model, linkages sound like a great way to hear from students we don't normally hear from. We hear from youth councils in Samamish, Kirkland, and Redmond. But what about students who aren't civically engaged or who aren't DECA and on ASB? It would be very helpful to have linkages with students who, you know, have different perspectives. And being in a virtual world right now, it makes it easier than ever, because we don't have that transportation issue holding us back from more student representation. Those are my first thoughts.
Mark, I'm sorry. I just noticed your hand was up. And I think it may have been up for a while. Apologies.
No problem. It didn't get tired of doing a virtual hand.
Oh, Mark, you're on mute. Did you?
Sorry. I clicked it. It didn't work. I like student reps. I'm concerned about equity in selection of student reps. That said, that can be handled, I'm sure. I'd also like to suggest, you know, the idea of having the linkages with them, it's clunky, it's kind of formal, and it takes more time. I'm not sure how much we get out of it. I'd like to think we got a lot out of it, but I don't know from the student's perspective. Again, I'm concerned about the equity factor. One thing I've been kicking around while I've been listening to everybody was we keep thinking about representation from students on the board or in a group setting that's kind of a formalized. The thought occurred to me that if we could work with the high schools to encourage an electronic newspaper for each school, having them cover the board, in addition to the reps, having them cover the board, have them editorialize on the board actions. Now, we got to have to have effects, again, to be quite frank. But by getting all those kids involved, we're talking about dozens of kids from each of the schools, being able to get involved from different perspectives, different angles. I think you're going to find more representation that way. And plus, to be quite frank, it encourages them to get involved in issues more than just skin-deep. I want, I see them get their teeth into it. I don't want to see this just one more piece on their resume. But I think if we could broaden it out by virtue of the newspaper, it's called electronic newspaper, called electronic magazine, I don't care. You can call it Barnum &amp; Bailey for all I care. But the point is, to get more kids involved in that manner, I think it would work. A lot of school districts, to be quite frank, I'd say 99.5% of them don't allow students to comment on or cover their school boards. God knows mine didn't. But that said, I think it would be a way, if you want to engage students, it would broaden it out. You'd have the rep, you'd have the linkages, but it would be a lot more representative, and we'd have more feedback, to be quite frank, from their perspective, even the news people covering it, as opposed to even editorializing. Just the coverage, how they covered what they see as important to cover, and who they go to comment from about the things they cover. Just throw that in your mix.
Chris?
Do we know that there aren't newspapers? Because I'm pretty sure our high school has a newspaper. It may only come out quarterly.
The newspapers we have are either quarterly, annually. They're few and far between. They were still in print the last time I saw them. And they're clubs. And as good as the club may be, you can't beat a class. But I guess we'll have to work with the environment we have. But I think if you do it electronically, you don't have to work. First of all, you don't have the downside of who's going to do the printing, because God knows we don't have a print shop in any of our tech schools anymore. My point is to have them, to encourage these newspapers to cover all these aspects, to cover the board, to editorialize. I haven't seen a school newspaper in this district that I could really point out as a beacon on the hill. And maybe I'm prejudiced in that manner, because we had a hell of a newspaper, and it launched a lot of kids' careers and enabled a lot of kids to go to college by virtue of our newspaper that I was on. I think you have to have a depth of involvement, more than just this surface mentality that we have for kids being involved in journalism. They could also be covering the city council meetings, for that matter, too. Anyway, that's my stop. Anyway, that's my soapbox.
Okay. Chris?
So I want to, I, actually, Mark, I'm in favor of what you're proposing, but I don't want to go into the weeds because I'm not sure what our objective is yet. So to put that in perspective, earlier today, I consulted with the local 18-year-old about student voice. And he's like, first he just laughed at me. And then he's like, what? You want us to feel heard? And is that part of our objective here? I honestly think it's almost impossible for the board to be responsible for making students feel heard in aggregate. So if that's not our main objective, our main objective then is for us to have a finger on the pulse of what our loyal subjects feel through some level of representation. And then we get into the back and forth of a student representative or regular groups. The student representative thing, I am with Mark on the fear of resume fodder. I mean, the kid who's there to do that, or God help us, the kid who's there and feels it's their objective to, their, 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 it's not their privilege, that is actually their obligation to object to everything that's against, that they feel is against students, which could be a disaster. I had not gone, so my take on this is if we want to have student input and have a closer finger on the pulse of our student bodies, that an advisory council is by far and away the way to go. And then in terms of the shifting, there's urgent issues that arise and then there's global ongoing issues. There would be a real value in having an advisory council that met maybe quarterly, ideally not during finals for whatever quarter we're in, but maybe met quarterly, had a standing set and then had ad hoc kids invited to that. If we're interested in hearing from a particular community, if we want to hear from Latino, Latino, Latinx community, to have their representatives of their organizations invited to a particular meeting to talk about a specific subject and to have a standing group that are there to discuss all the subject. And finally, honestly, if I was a student, I would just die sitting through our budget discussions. It's too far back from where they're at. And so the advisory council has the advantage of not forcing a kid to sit through every one of our board meetings. That we would be able to focus on the things that are of direct interest to students where they might feel that they have the most greatest impact. And but I'm, and finally, I just want to say that I agree with everybody who's stated that we need to do something. If we're going to do something, I would much rather go with an advisory council model. And given that Zoom has become the de facto standard, why don't we just, we don't have to have an in-person meeting with the students. It'll make it a whole lot easier for them to show up regularly, to always have, just to say, all student advisory council meetings will be via Teams. And that way we don't have to worry about where it's going to be, transportation, access, all of those issues. So anyway, those are my thoughts and in no particular order.
Siri, you don't want to respond? Are you responding to something Chris said? Mute again.
I'm off mute. There we go. I saw it. The only piece is I want to be cautious that we do not make assumptions for our students. I always get concerned when we say our students are too busy or we'll only get these kids or they won't, they don't want to hear our meetings. That is not the impression I'm getting from our students. I have had the opportunity to speak with student reps who are on boards. I've heard several of them present. I've heard them speak of the experience and the value. They come to Olympia. I've had them in DC when I've been there doing advocacy work, too. And there is a lot of value, so I would hesitate to speak for any student because they have a lot to say on budget. They have a lot to say on these issues and I think we need to be respectful of that. I agree with you 100% and advisory council, I would, I view that actually as operational and that's run through the superintendent helping to do that. And then we have a liaison who works as the board rep from that council. So that they can be involved and bring that voice with us in that way. So it's a way of, there is value.
Yeah, is that what you're talking about?
Huh?
I'm trying, you're saying bring the voice, but I'm trying to figure out where you're bringing the voice. Because I'm not seeing any way that we can have someone regularly attending our meetings, bringing our voice back to the high schools. Because we've got six of them that would each have to have a rep. I think that's crazy. If we only have one, then we have five.
If you have an advisory council that's working and they are a liaison to the board, to that advisory council, that advisory council is made up of all those different students, but that's not a direct interaction with the board unless we choose to do a linkage with that advisory council and be able to pull in all voices that way. And that way you, and actually, North Shore is doing it in that function. They actually run a whole retreat day as well where they bring all the students in for a day to talk about issues with the district. The board doesn't go, it's actually staff, but they help to feed some of that information going forward. So there's a lot of, I am, I will be very adamant that the board has to have some direct interaction with students because I think it's important for us to hear their voices on consistent basis. And I think we have to role model that piece. If we expect other people to do it, we as the board should do it. If we believe it's valuable here, then we need to believe it's valuable for what we do, too. So I think that's, I'm off my soapbox.
No, that's all right. You're still, I want to explore this soapbox because it's important for us to find something that will work for all of us. And yes, I am going to be arrogant and decide that there are some things that students don't care about. Honestly, that's because I can tell you there are significant chunks of the operations of the district that I don't really care much about. I would be happy if I never heard about another athletic issue ever. But that's something that the time commitment of a student attending meetings every two weeks during their senior year, I think is crazy for the same student to have that obligation. And also it would make this, our interaction with that community so contingent on who that kid is. If we do it in a more, if we directly interact with that board, that that would allow us to more meaningfully get feedback than having that one point of contact. Anyway, I'm sorry. So I'm still disagreeing.
I'm saying both.
No, I know you're saying both and I'm saying no. I don't buy having a student at every one of our school board meetings being a valuable thing to do. I just don't see it. And I can give you the students who would tell you that's crazy, too. You can give me students that say it would be good. I can give you leadership students who would say, yeah, that's a waste of my time. So we've both got constituents who would support either point of view. So it's really down to us. Anyway, so I'll get off my soapbox. Eric?
Well, John, did you have something you want to clarify and then I'll go to Cassandra and then I'll go?
Couple of things. One, I also think about the opportunity to provide an experience for a or a couple of students to actually start to understand what does representative democracy look like in action. I think, I think it's a skill set that people don't foster at a young age because there's not a lot of opportunities for them. So that's one thing. I also think just from kind of my reading, I don't know if it's about student voice at your board meetings, but student perspective. Because voice kind of indicates kind of this broad range of opinions where perspective is, I think, something different. And so I would also offer those as considerations as you're thinking about this.
So John, for the.
Chris, I'm going to cut you off. I want to make sure we hear from everyone, including me. So Cassandra?
No, you had your hand up first.
Oh, I'm actually, now that I cut Chris off, I was actually about to, I was going to agree with Chris. So I'm, I want, I think that, okay, so my perspective is I think it's important for the board to regularly hear student perspective. I just, I don't see the value of having a student representative at every board meeting. I do, but I do see the value in the board regularly engaging with a diverse group of students. So that's my two cents for now. Cassandra, and then?
I was just going to say I have four boys and two of them would have jumped at the chance to sit through every single school board meeting. So I think, and I think that is our point, is that there are so many perspectives and we're not hearing from really anyone right now unless the district has submitted, you know, here's a survey, we'd like to have comment from you. I think the students will tell us what they might want to see and that will guide this work.
Chris, I want to go to you. One thing I left out, the last two cents is something John said last time, when we talked about this before, really resonating, but I just remembered it again, and that is whatever we do now isn't, doesn't have to be permanent. And so I am in favor, look, I'm in favor of we've been trying a student rep right now. I just think I'm, we try it. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work and we do something different. So I'm trying to keep that in mind as I'm thinking about all of this, that this decision is not the last time that we're deciding what to do here. Chris and then Mark?
Yeah, well, so there are two pieces. The first is getting back to John's point about giving a student experience in representative democracy. As far as I'm concerned, if we're going to have a student representative on the board, we should have one from every single AP government class. I mean, that's the level that we should have of the class is connected to us.
Why the AP? One of the regular students?
Because that's the only government class. As far as I'm aware, there isn't a government class that isn't AP. Is there?
No, civic classes?
Not that I'm aware of. No, no. But anyway, but every government class, I'm okay with that. But so, you know, providing an experience to one student, I'd rather not make it about the student but about hearing from a community and hearing from them in a systematic way. And so maybe, I'm, if we're going to go somewhere, I'm much more enthused about getting an advisory council because I feel like that's something that's in your mixed model, Siri, but it's also in my non-mixed model. It's the shared component that we agree on, that putting something like that together allows us to collect feedback and to interact with kids and learn more about what their experiences of the system. I mean, honestly, it's, right now, I'm finding a huge value in the diversity of voices in our feedback on, from students. The letters to the editor, the letters to the board that we're getting. If I'd only read one of those, I would not have anywhere close to the perspective I've got after reading 50 of them. That there are some kids who are seeing this, there are some kids who are seeing that. It really is the aggregate voice that I find valuable, not any single voice among the students who can talk into us. And that's why I'm very concerned about even going down the road, anointing one student to speak on behalf of the Zoomer generation. I see the talking stick.
Okay, I guess Eric's got his mute on, so I'll go ahead and jump in. What the hell? That's right. Here's a, here's a good process for, yeah, I know, it happens to all of us, Eric. Sooner or later, we all go nuts. Anyway, a process for gaining the rep. You have your linkage, first of all, and you do it on a weekend, a Saturday or whatever. If, although that does limit you religious wise, to be quite frank. But you do it on a given day, let's put it that way, or a given evening. Have that linkage, add the link, end of the linkage and make sure that's kids from all of the high schools. From that linkage, then you say, okay, why don't you folks get together and elect yourself a council? Or I think that was the word you used, council. Then you narrow it down from the council, you say, okay, council, for this semester, elect one of the six of you or five of you, however many there is, to be the board rep. And then each semester, do the same thing. That's a process. You winnow it down. You don't just pluck somebody out of the hat. You don't take the favorite 4.40 student, the one who's always answers all the extra credit questions that, and everybody else despises. You get a representative from the people who want to participate. That eliminates the kids that say, I would never do that. But these are kids that have, are showing an interest and then you winnow it down until you have one rep. I don't think it takes time. I think it takes one session of the linkage, one session. At the end of the session, you have this committee formed or council, whatever, and at that, they elect one of the reps. Just a thought, but I also like to have the newspapers covering it.
So Mark, for that, is it, do we need to impose that on them or do we let them figure out how to find their rep?
It's a system. That's the only thing I can say. You're not going to have an election from each of the schools for this. You're not going to, that'd be insanity or it'd take longer. That indeed has you getting groups against groups, if you will. If you're going to find kids who are interested in the process, it would probably be the kids who are interested in coming to the, the, the first meeting. I'm sorry, I'm all of a sudden blanking on the word. Never did like that word. Linkage, thank you. My other, my other personality, you told me. Anyway, the linkage would be the, the only trouble is what we have with the linkage is we usually invite the kids or we invite the participants. If we had a situation where we could say, hey, we're going to have a linkage, we're going to have this meeting with students. We'd like to have 25, whatever, 30, I don't care, and, you know, 10 from each school or, pardon me, 40 kids, 10 from each school. Yeah, I can't do math. Anyway, and then break it down from there. Find a way to, if you want to go and solicit the kids through the government classes, great. If you want to do it through other classes, that'd be very representative of that sort of situation or through the clubs, however you'd want to invite, but have them choose to be part of it as opposed to, I select somebody, John selects somebody, Principal Smith suggests somebody, Principal Jones selects, you know, that cherry picks. And I'm afraid again of, of having it being representative of all the students. Anyway, that's my response to your question, Chris. Did I answer it?
Yeah, yeah.
Jay?
So I think Mark just articulated what I was saying in regards to an advisory council and then a liaison concept that works from there. As to the process in which you do that, that's up for, you know, I've seen it done through application process that you put that out. Any student can apply, then you put together the advisory committee and then is that a choice to go? But I do believe that that advisory committee actually would lay on the, on staff side. That would be our superintendent's responsibility to really coordinate that piece. And it would be much more operational in many ways, which is probably, will engage more that way and feeling they're actually doing something there, which will gain strength when they come to the board because they also have additional information about the way the district works as well as the schools itself. So there's a lot of benefit from that approach, I could see. And I, and my reason for saying that, and I believe, John, I appreciate you're talking about student perspective because I also bring a perspective as an individual. That's the reality. My background, what I bring and my experience, that definitely plays into what I view as valuable. It's tempered by other things and other priorities as you bring in bigger picture. And I think our student would be, any students, if it's one, if it's two, I'm cautious to do too many because I think it's problematic and I think we want to be cautious of that. But I think having an advisory council on the side is, and I shouldn't say on the side, in addition to, I think it's very complimentary. I know Mercer Island runs a very similar concept, speaks very highly of it when I spoke to their superintendent and their board members. North Shore is a similar model, not quite. And I think there's a lot of value to that, that sort of gets at your concern, Chris, about a student rep because you're not hearing from us and yours too, Eric, that's not hearing to as many voices. I think you allow that, but then you allow that opportunity for that perspective to come forward. So I, as I said, I think Mark articulated what, what I was trying to say as well, so.
I'm much more comfortable with a rep if there's an advisory council. Because what we, what I, what I would like to see is, is the perspective of students, especially given remote learning. It will be so valuable to hear from students during this time. And, you know, hearing from one isn't enough. Having the advisory council would give us students from many different schools and backgrounds. And we could hear from more of them. And we could hear from more of them, what is affecting them? What is working? We can ask for their input to try and understand, you know, in the real world, how is, you know, learning going for them? And what ideas do they have? Because these kids have amazing ideas.
So what I'm wrestling with is, why are students different than parents or teachers?
They are. We have PTA.
We have PTSA.
And I hear from them a lot.
We have liaison. We have PTSA people who come from the district PTSA, who come to our meetings, watch our meetings, report back, and they're good liaisons from us to that community, but they're not on the board. So why do we need to put a student on the board in order to make a liaison to a student community effective? That's what I'm wrestling with. Why is it so special that the student actually be on the board as opposed to being a liaison who they, I mean, I would actually prefer us rather, I mean, yes, we need coordination from the administration, but I'd prefer to have us. If we can do it quarterly, make it to a quarterly student Zoom call of this advisory council, I think that would be more valuable to me than having a single student present at each of our board meetings. And so it, anyway, I'm still struggling with having a representative who's formally involved in the board, as opposed to having a liaison to an organization. I love the idea of the organizational structure. I want an advisory committee. I think it's a great idea. And it allows the kids, yes, it's self-selecting. Mark's nailed it on the head, that, I mean, honestly, the way you do, you start with the ASB council from each of the high schools, and you have them nominate someone to go and represent them. But, but what are you going to do? You can't do a student body election for this position. That's crazy.
You could ask for applications from things to go through, and you open the door because it can't be a popularity contest, number one.
I agree with that.
And it might be that you then are selecting, you know, you think about representation, and you think about how well it's going across the board, and you create that environment, similar to how we create our long-term facilities task force. We were very thoughtful of how we put that mix together. I think these are the same things that we do.
I think that's a fine idea. I'm just, I'm struggling with the notion that that council with somebody who is the face of it to talk to us, as opposed to someone who sits next to us. I just am skeptical that that is more valuable than having, forming the advisory committee by itself, and just having a formal way to connect with them. How, and I agree with you, actually, the ASB, I was just throwing that out there as an existing structure. Personally, I think that would miss a whole bunch of different communities, whether it's the ELL students, SED students. But there are organizations within schools for each of those, so that, again, if we were, if we did it in an ad hoc manner, we could actually, you know, this quarterly meeting is going to be on SED issues. We, in addition to whoever the standing members of this committee are, we would make sure that we had representatives of SED from each of the buildings. That would allow us to do something that it evolves as we need it to, to hear the voices that we really want to. And I'm not saying that we don't want to hear SED all the time, but there are going to be times when we want half the voices in the room to be specialists in SED. And there are going to be times when that's not, half the specialists in SED aren't going to be as interested in whatever we're discussing at that point. But allowing, coming up with a structure that allows the students to pick their representation, I'm very supportive of that. I don't want to invent it for them. I just want to give them the resources to make it happen, and give them enough guidance that they don't just flounder. But again, it comes back to what's the purpose? And if we can give them the purpose for us as board members. And there's a big difference between, the purpose is to come up with an advisory council, where the board will attend and listen to you for two hours, once every quarter. Or the board wants you to come up with an advisory council, that nominates one person to be a representative at board meetings, every board meeting. Two very different proposals, two very different meanings in terms of our purpose, that would change how the kids would buy into the system.
But the advisory committee is ongoing regardless of whether or not there is a board rep.
That's, that's my point, is that that part works very well. Unless, I mean, if the board rep is assumed to be the voice that channels all things from the advisory committee, then we don't have to go to their meetings. That would be something where it's reducing our direct time commitment to interacting with large numbers of students. And we're relying on a representative to be that voice channeling it for them, which I'm not.
It is also allowing opportunities for students to be engaged at a policy level, which is different, and the opportunity to have that discussion and what that means. And so I do think that opportunity of that civic engagement is important.
Right, but engaging at a policy level doesn't require us to have one person engaged in the policy level. I'd actually rather throw an entire policy into their advisory committee and have them tell us what's wrong with it.
But that individual who's been hearing the discussion can bring that back as more effectively to, and holding that and having a bigger discussion around it within that setting. Absolutely.
Yeah, and that's where I'm skeptical, that we need an individual who can bring our conclusion back to us. I think that they could all bring it back to us as a group, if we visited them, meet them where they are, rather than invite them to our meeting. So.
I volunteer. Just be part of it. I'll meet with students, I'll set time aside.
I'm volunteering, I'm actually saying, I will attend four of these meetings with students per year. It's outside of our existing commitments, but it's definitely something where it's different than what our existing commitments. I'd rather not call it a linkage session, that just call this the student advisory council, and put stuff on their plate, so that they can help rassle with an issue.
I've got you down for once a quarter.
I'm willing to go there. I mean, honestly, kids are fun in, yeah, quarterly doses. No, it would be fun for me to see that. It would be a lot more fun for me than to try and have one student consistently present, relaying everything. That just, to me, is not an efficient way to tackle the problem.
I would, your image isn't quite what my image is, so we're definitely on a different span of what that reality is, so.
Okay, so what is your image? What do you think they're doing at each board meeting?
I think they're engaging in conversation much the way we are. They are acting as an equal player and reading through a budget and determining, are you hitting the priorities that you were? They may be saying, you know what, what about, are you funneling this here? Here's a priority we see, does it play out here? They're listening to that equity piece going, you know, you've really missed this component, because that's what, I mean, my conversations with my teenagers, I get different viewpoints all the time, and you have to continue, okay, and that's how you bring them in, so. They help to shape conversation in a different way. And if I think of the table that John had put up, that showed the adult collaboration with students, there is a component around collaborating as well, and working together, and building the, because there is a sense of urgency with youth that I don't quite have, honestly, at my age. And I don't mean that, and it's just, that's one of the pieces of the reality of the differences. There's also a much freer viewpoint that everything is possible. Not quite as much as the barriers that come forward. They can see outside boxes in different ways and different things. They're part of a digital age. So I think there's views we miss by not having it at the table.
All right. John, did you have something you had to add, and then I'm going to try to summarize something?
One more counter to that piece, and that is, each of us in our first year, how much of the various issues did we really have something meaningful contributed? It's so educational for us to learn our way through it. You're going to pretend that a kid's going to master the details of all the various things in the one year that we have them. I'm skeptical, highly skeptical, that they will be able to provide meaningful input on a broad number of issues.
But you're willing to try.
What? No, I'm not.
And I heard you say you're willing to try.
Not interested in wasting time and energy on something where I don't believe that it has value in the long run. I can see the value on the advisory council, but having a student member on the board, I see that as an awful lot of our time spent educating one kid in how the system works. And I don't see that as a valuable use of our time. Sorry.
Dr. Holman?
I will just disagree.
Yeah.
It's happened before. And it will happen again.
John, did you have anything you want to ask?
I was just going to comment. A year from now, I think we'll be clearer on our purpose. And whatever we do, I think it will help formulate kind of the collective thinking of the board and me around student voice, participation, engagement. And so I think this is a healthy dialogue to have. I also think the purpose of advisory and the purpose of rep are totally different. When I think about advisory, it's kind of an ongoing feedback around, it feels a little bit more operational than it does around kind of board policy and work, although that can help inform kind of the board's understanding and perspective. And I feel like I'm advocating for a student rep, and I'm not. I'm just, as I'm hearing the dialogue, this is what I'm thinking about. It feels like a rep starts to understand the role of the board to some degree, maybe not holistically and fully, kind of what Chris was talking about. But I think having someone there consistently provides at least a consistent understanding of, we talked about this last week, here's a presentation. So they kind of understand the routine and nature of school board work. So I think that's the, a benefit of having someone there on an ongoing basis is, they start to grow accustomed to the board's work. Whereas if you, if you're bringing students in to board meetings for comment, things like that, that's just what they're doing. They're commenting on what you've asked them to comment on. So that's a difference that I see between the two.
Chris, I agree with, I think, 99% of what you said, and so I'm not going to reiterate it. And I will just briefly respond to Dr. Holman, and everyone else, and maybe Chris can say that. I think it's pretty, I think it's unrealistic to expect a student rep would be, would be able to, it's, look, it's really hard to impress as board members to constantly remember, we need to be focused on policy, not on operations. I think adding a student rep is going to continue to throw us off kilter in our meetings, and, but, okay. All that said, Chris, I think we've lost this debate. Because, because I-
I'm not sure of that. Mark's the swing vote here.
Well, I don't know. I think I heard from Mark. I've been taking notes. I don't want to put words in Mark's mouth. I have a note from Mark that, next to Mark's name, I wrote, "Student rep, but concerns about how we are equitably selecting who that is." Cassandra and Siri seem to be supportive of the idea, too.
Then we have lost.
I think, I feel like we have, unless I'm misstating anyone's position. So I just, I don't want to just continue to have the same debate. As entertaining as it is to listen to you and Siri debate, I don't, I don't know that my minds are going to be changed.
They're always shifted a touch through the debate.
I understand. Experiment. At the end of the day, we just have to set a time for evaluation. When are we going to plie this thing?
I mean, the only other component to it that I would say is, the first step, I would believe, is doing a council first, and having the conversation with them, and actually speaking about a student rep, and how would they want to liaise with the board and work with the board, and so I do think, I would be hesitant as the first step to be the rep. I do think the first step is doing the council and working from there.
The advisory council.
Yeah, does that make sense? I don't know if you'd agree with that, Cassandra, or?
Yeah, I actually think that makes sense. And it helps us be very intentional, I think, entering into what that rep role might look like.
Mark, I apologize. You started to talk a minute ago, and I kind of talked over you, so I want to make sure I-
No, don't worry about it. You know, it's, it's a great concept. I like the idea of getting the kids involved. And how we end up doing it, was, you know, just, it's one of those things where it's time to start, just do it, for crying out loud. We can find a process, do it. Otherwise, we're going to have the same conversation, I need to put my tongue, the same conversation 10 years from now with different people. And because we've been having it for almost eight years that I've been on the board. So if you want to do it, do it, for God's sakes. You don't have to do it in perpetuity. I would love to see it broadened out to the idea of creating a journalism program in this district. It's a crime that we don't have one. And it should be, it's one way you get kids interested in government, in another aspect of their lives, other than having them become all computer engineers. So, you know, it's different talents, different expectations. Do it. But, you know, let's quit jabbering about it. Amen. As an old friend of mine, he said, "Let's do it even if it's wrong."
Yeah.
And when we know better, we do better.
And so-
I've heard that somewhere.
Yeah. I believe I've heard the board's direction, and I appreciate you providing that, and so what I'm going to do-
Can you tell us what it is, then?
What I'm going to do is, I'm going to do some outreach to particularly Mercer Island and North Shore, just to understand what their councils, their advisory councils are doing, how they're operating, how they're selecting students. Siri, I think you sent me how they're selecting in Mercer Island. It's like an application type thing. And then I'll see if there's other regional districts that are doing it. Just to get some feedback around what's happening, I think we're saying this is a superintendent's advisory council. And so I will probably meet with them more often than quarterly. And so I think I heard that from the board as well, that it's a council that I'm managing and maintaining, which I completely agree with, in that you would participate on a quarterly basis. And that, I think, once we start that, then we will figure out the right methodology for determining how we want to move forward with a board rep, whether it's part of that advisory, or if it's a separate piece. And so, but we will figure that out at a certain point in time. And I think, as I'm thinking about it, I don't know if that board rep is a 2021 board rep, or if we think about it being starting next year. And so I, just as I think about process of getting a superintendent's advisory council, that will take a period of time. Getting students figuring out what that kind of pattern looks like, that also is a next step. And then figuring out how do we engage a rep is another process, if you will. So that's just kind of how I'm thinking about it.
As long as the steps are going forward in doing the council, and that we are engaging on that quarterly basis and we're working forward, I wouldn't have an issue in working with that council to determine what is that board interplay, and allow them to have that voice to help create what that looks like.
Great.
That sounds better to me than what I thought was better.
But I would say, but the key is that we have to then do the commitment to have those conversations. I do think, as Cassandra spoke to pretty heavily, you know, with digital, with the remote learning, being able to get some direct feedback on that, I think, through a lot of the equity and some of those issues, having those conversations directly. So knowing that that's coming and that that's the plan, I think that's a great, and that gives them a clear product as well to speak about in that year, too, of what is that relation going forward.
Great.
So did I just talk myself out of a student rep?
No.
I felt like it, and we're going to move on.
You talked about a runway.
Just not as the first step. And if the students talk us into a student rep, I'm willing to be talked into it by the students. So. In other news, Mark, Europe is hiding in the CTE department. They've got weekly news under some of their video production things, which is, appears to be where the newspaper has gone at Lake Washington. I really wanted to know if there was something, and there's something there that could be a good framework for what you're talking about.
Me, then.
Yeah, exactly.
For one semester, they had a video news program at Redmond High, but when they lost a teacher, they lost the program.
Oh, really? Okay. So it's still alive and held up, but that's something we need to work on.
I have to have, I know some former journalists who are now high school teachers who do this as a specialty.
Yeah.
And it can't be somebody, some English teacher, that all of a sudden thinks he or she knows newspapers, because they only, they know grammar, they know punctuation, but they don't know news. And that's a totally different animal.
So anyway, I'm behind you on that a lot. All right.
John, one last thing that I want to make sure you captured, and that was, I think the interest from everyone on the board was making sure that that we're not, I'm just going to say this sort of colloquially, that we're not just capturing the ASB presidents on this group, that we're having a real thoughtful way about how we're, about the students that are going to be participating in this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. I think I heard that from every board member.
Yeah.
And to make sure that that application process is very equitably sent out to students, so all students are very aware of the opportunity to apply.
And that's where I think it might be even more of equity of representation from the various programs. free and reduced, is represented in whatever panel. So it may not be proportional to the number of applications, but that's a really important place to be.
Absolutely.
And it might be, the various clubs that they have that represent LBGGQ, the Latinx, Black Student Union, whatever those, you know, whatever clubs they might have, that might be a way to broaden its representation, at least in a, you know, start. If nothing else, as opposed to tapping each kid on the children, say, hey, you want to be?
Okay, anything else? Questions or comments?
I want to say thank you for the discussion, and coming to a final action going forward. That's great. I would also, the other piece of why postponing a student rep makes sense, bringing somebody on in a virtual environment makes it much more difficult in order to be able to build those relations, and that's some of the value of having it. So, I think doing it through a committee first and working forward will make sense, and hopefully we'll be out of the virtual world.
But if need be, in order to get the kids to be able to participate, we can still hold the meetings virtually, so that we don't have a transportation issue again.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that's important, that we look at that and hybrid it, if we have to, as well.
So, I wanted to go back to a slide from John earlier this evening, because the Courageous Conversations agreement really fits here. I'm committed to stay engaged on this stuff, to experience discomfort, I'll give my truth, you can never stop that. And I'm expecting and accepting non-closure.
Chris, it's like your hand with a hammer, it feels so good when you stop.
Beautiful. All right, let's end on that poetry. All right, we've reached the end of the agenda for tonight. Our next meeting is September-
14th.
14th. Which might be my wedding anniversary.
You should probably check.
I have it in mind, usually.
I can't recall.
It's still being recorded.
Never say that, never say that.
It's either my wedding anniversary, it's one of my friends' birthdays, I can't remember. So, okay, anyway. The, this August 24th study session is now adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, everyone.
All right, good night, everybody.